It's five o'clock.
Thank you. Okay, we're called to order a special meeting of the Board of Directors of the Valles Seated Water District for Wednesday, March 18th, 2020 at 5:00 PM. This pursuant to Executive Order N 2520 issued by Governor Newsom, one or more board members may participate in this meeting via teleconference. We'll start with, I would like to sit, it's all right, we will forego the pledge of allegiance and we'll do roll call by name. So Director Martin?
Present.
Pardon, are you, oh, present, good. Doctor, uh, doctor, Director Elatharp?
Present.
Director Sinella?
Present.
And Director Evans, present as well. Is there a motion to adopt our agenda for this special meeting?
Director Martin, is that moved?
I couldn't hear any of that, I'm so sorry.
Director Martin, so approved, are moved?
And the second by?
I'll second it, Director Elatharp.
Thank you, it's been moved and seconded that we adopt the agenda. We'll respond by roll call. Director Martin?
Yes.
Director Elatharp?
Yes.
Director Sinella?
Yes.
And Director Evans, yes, as well. I'd like to read about remote participation.
President Evans?
Yes.
If I may interrupt, could you maybe for the record say something about Director Hernandez? You never mentioned his name, to make sure the record reflects he's not here.
Oh, you're right, you're right, and Director Hernandez is absent. Is that what I need to say, or do I need to say more?
No, that'd be fine, thank you.
Okay, then, sorry. To encourage remote participation during the COVID-19 situation, members of the public may submit written comments on agenda items or on non-agenda items within the Board's jurisdiction. All written comments that are received at least two hours before the meeting will be provided to the Board, and a record of the receipt of comment will be noted during the meeting. Comments may be submitted by email to Executive Secretary Diane Pazbar at dpazbar@vwd.org. Did we receive any correspondence, Dr. Prum, or General Manager?
We did not, we looked at the records as of 3:00, which is two hours before the start of the meeting, and no comments were received.
And do we have any people in our public, of the public in the audience?
There are no members of the public present.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next item is the consent calendar, is there a motion to, is there a motion to improve, approve the consent calendar?
Director Martin, motion to approve.
Thank you, and to second, I'll second it. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar. Please respond to roll call vote. Director Martin?
Yes.
Director Elatharp?
Yes.
Director Sinella?
Yes.
Director Evans, yes, with Hernandez absent. So we'll move to our action item, 2.1, construction contract award of North Twin Oaks Tank Number One refurbishment. I don't know if that's going to be you, General Manager, or it will be James?
It'll be our district engineer, James Gumpel, he's also on the line, so I'm going to turn it over to James.
Yeah, thank you, this is District Engineer Gumpel, thank you, President Evans, members of the Board. This item starts on page 73 of the Board Packet, and it is for award of North Twin Oaks Tank Number One refurbishment. North Twin Oaks Tanks actually sits pretty adjacent to our large Twin Oaks reservoirs, and the North Twin Oaks Tank is actually our second smallest steel tank in the district at .6 million gallons, so just over half a million gallons. The tank was built in 1961, and it was inspected back in 2015, and there was some significant deterioration due to not being recoded in the past. The staff went ahead and sent out initial bids, and only see one bid initially, that was far exceeded the engineer's estimate by well over, I think, $100,000, $150,000. So we went ahead and looked at the project and rebid it out. As of February 2020, February 18th, 2020, three bids were received, and you can see in your Board Packet, the three bidders, with the low bid being $446,425. The engineer's estimate was $425,000. So staff reviewed the bid, and during the review period of the bid, we also received a protest letter from the second bidder, El Paso Robust Tanks, which basically questioned the experience of the low bidder. After reviewing the low bidder's credentials and working through council on it, it was determined that the low bidder had the proper amount of experience necessary to do the job. There's also two minor irregularities that were noticed in the low bidder's bid, both of them were not of any substance, and staff is going to be, staff and council are recommending waiving that. So staff is going to be doing the construction management of the project, and Harp and Associates, which is our ASN, is consultant, we will be doing the specialty tank inspection. With that, you can see the fiscal impact of the project, project did come in a little bit over the engineer's estimate, and we're looking at currently about a budget shortfall of $54,000. That's primarily due to two reasons, is the project bid is over the engineer's estimate, which also puts our contingency for change orders a little bit higher, and then we did have to bid the project out twice to get a more competitive bid. With that, staff recommends four steps on this. First is to waive the two minor deviations from the capital industrial coatings LLC's bid, reject the protest letter from Paso Robust Tanks, increase the budget by $54,131, and authorize General Manager to execute the construction contract with Capital Industrial Coatings LLC in the amount of $446,425, subject to the provisions of the contract. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, James, um, yes.
Director Martin has two questions.
Director Martin?
Hi, James, nice to see you, you look good.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, question, didn't we just spend money the last five years on this tank?
No, the tank job that you may be referring to is the Metalarc Tank Number One Recoding Project. This project is another job that we, the only thing we did was do the design on. However, on this project, when the Board awarded the design, as you may recall, it was around the same time that we had that large change order, we went back in and checked the rafters, and realized the rafters on this tank also require replacement, so that's all part of the bid. So we're not expecting a change order for that.
Okay, and my second question, this is a, the smallest tank we have, it's less than a half million gallons, is that correct?
It's the second smallest tank we have.
Okay, what would it, and this is a 1916 tank that we keep rehabbing, but what's the cost of a new tank that size, at the same location, with the same foundation?
It'd probably be close to about, let's see, I'm just doing the math right now, probably be close to $780,000 to $900,000?
For a brand-new installation rather than a rehab?
Yeah, which includes demoing the existing tank. You can't use the existing foundation because the new seismic laws require a different type of foundation, and so basically you'd have to take everything out, start over.
Do you foresee any possible benefit of doing that to the additional one-third of cost, another $300,000?
Not really, because we cannot fit a larger tank on here, and when you refurbish the tank, we actually add life to the asset, so we depreciate it more also, and that's more on the financial side. So we've looked at tank cycles before, but typically, no matter what, a new steel tank will require recoating 15, 20 years down the line. The problem, one of the reasons this is expensive is basically we're building a new roof, because from 1961, this is, I believe, the first time it's being recoded. Thank you.
Great questions. Director Elatharp, do you have any for them?
I don't have any questions, I would move staff's recommendation.
Thank you, and Director Sinella?
I don't have any questions, but if Director Elatharp moved, staff's recommendation, I'll second it.
Thank you, so it's been moved by Director Elatharp, and seconded by Director Sinella, that we approve the recommendations by staff. All those in favor will answer by roll call, well, even if you're not in favor, you can answer by roll call. Director Martin?
Yes.
Thank you, Director Elatharp?
Yes.
Thank you, and Director Sinella?
Yes.
Director Evans is a yes, with Director Hernandez absent. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Director.
The only thing, will we start on this, did I miss somewhere where, when this starts? A start date?
We'll be sending out based on this, a notice of award, and then we, then that starts the contract period for them to get the contract. We don't anticipate them actually starting construction till, what do you think? Probably till May.
Okay, and then with the virus, maybe later. All right, we're now move on to the second of our action item, 2.2, it's all yours, Mr. Prum.
Yeah, so I just wanted to take an opportunity to provide the Board with an update regarding the district's response to the coronavirus outbreak. So just as it's disrupted all of your individuals' lives, it's certainly disrupted our operations here. We're constantly getting information from the state and from the federal government regarding.
I'm sorry, did we skip something?
Pardon?
I'm sorry, did we skip something?
Did we skip something?
No, so.
Yeah, I thought, I thought we had two action items.
We're on action item 2.2 right now, this is not the General Manager's report, this is item 2.2.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, I didn't realize, okay.
So it's, basically I was saying, it's a very fluid situation we're in, things are changing day to day, and I just wanted to provide the Board and the public with a brief update on what we are doing in response to this changing situation. So obviously, the district's primary objective is to ensure the health and safety of our customers and our employees. All the time, we want to remain or maintain our essential district functions, such as ensuring adequate supplies of safe, reliable water, and ensuring the wastewater system continues to operate properly. And in order to accomplish those co-equal goals, we are proposing the following actions, and I'll just run through a list here. So first thing we're doing is we're monitoring all the COVID-related information to remain up to date. It's, like I said, it's coming from the feds, coming from the state, we're in touch with other agencies. We're reducing our staffing levels. Essential staff has been identified, and they continue to report to work. Other non-essential staff is going to be reporting, is be sent home and working from home, so we've been going through the process of identifying what technology they, needs they would have to continue to be productive. That will start, those alternative work schedules will actually start on Monday next week. We'll have about 70, 60 to 70% of our staff will still be here, almost all of our field operations will be still reporting to work, our inspection group will report, our meter, readers will report to work, and various other people, all the managers, the general manager, myself, will report to work the entire time, but a lot of the other staff will be working from home, and we're making sure that they can be productive. We're working with our employees to assist them in any ways they can, for example, a lot of, we don't have any reported cases of the coronavirus here at work, none of the families have been affected, but the schools are closed down, so a lot of the children are at home, so our employees have to stay home with their children, so we're working with them on that as well. Another step we're taking is to enhance our cleaning and disinfection at all of our district facilities. We've changed the priorities of our custodial staff, we've engaged some outside contractors to help us clean, all in the effort to make sure that we're as clean and disinfected and sterile as we can be. We're also ensuring that we maintain adequate supplies for district operations. Some things are as simple as custodial, do we have enough toilet paper? And I'm sure in your private lives, you've realized how difficult that commodity is to come across, it's no different here. I think it hit us a little bit later, because we had direct contact through janitorial supply warehouses, but those supplies are drying up too. On the extreme end, we need to make sure that we can get the chemicals, not just for the district facilities here, but out at our lift stations, at our wastewater treatment plants, we're making sure we have adequate supplies. So we're dealing with suppliers and other agencies to make sure that we can get what we need. Effective tomorrow, March 19th, we will be closing the building to the public. It's in line with almost all the other agencies, they're all taking similar steps. We will be making accommodations for delivery of packages that have to come through, and for customers wishing to pay their bills. We're not going to open the door for customers to pay their bills, but we are putting out signs to inform them, and putting information on the website to let people know alternative ways to pay their bills. We're also coordinating our activities with our fellow water and wastewater agencies. We've been on group meetings with the Water Authority, with Encina Wastewater Authority, with other water districts and wastewater agencies. We're having a meeting Monday to talk about a North County cooperative agreement, so that we can help each other out in the event that we need to share resources. We are participating in the county water authorities, it's called Web EOC, Emergency Operations Center, and what they're trying to do is make sure all the agencies report on a daily basis how things are going, and what they may need, and what resources they may be able to offer up, and it's working well so far. We're communicating with the public more on our website, newsletters, we've talked about using our reverse 911 system if need be, we haven't found the need to do that yet, but we've made sure that we can invoke it if we need to. We are, I am proposing that we place a temporary suspension on disconnecting water services and late fee accrual. I think, given what we're facing, we need to make sure that all of our customers have access to water for health and sanitation reasons, and we need to recognize the financial hardships our customers may be experiencing. Some of them may be out of work, they may be working at a restaurant, they can't go to work, and they're not getting paid, so paying their water bill isn't their highest priority right now. So we'll, we'll eventually get the money from our customers, but we'll waive some of the late fees and hold off on disconnections. We're also tracking all of our coronavirus response-related costs, oftentimes.
Hey, Glenn?
Yes.
Yes.
Before you move on too far, this is Director Sinella, can you clarify on your last point? And I, and I tend to agree with your position there, but I just want to clarify, is that just residential customers, or does that also include commercial customers?
My recommendation is it would include commercial customers as well, you look at an example like a brewery, they've been shut down, they've been told that they can't participate, they can't operate at all, so if they come in and they can demonstrate that they're affected by the coronavirus, and that's the reason that they can't pay their water bill, we will make special accommodations for them.
Okay, yeah, I'm in full support of both the residential and commercial. The only thing I'd ask staff is, as we go through this, to keep the Board posted on how the, how that, everything accruing up as far as people taking advantage of that new program.
Yeah, we can certainly do that, the next bullet I was talking about kind of leads to that, we're tracking all of our response-related costs, so things like if we're waiving late fees, if we're paying people to work at home, and it's costing us more in some other ways because we may have to get contractors as well. Because when, when the state and the feds declare emergencies, it frees up reimbursements from FEMA and other agencies, but the first thing you have to do is make sure you track your costs, so that if you put in a claim, you can be reimbursed. So things like we just talked about with the hard, the waiving, the late fees and things like that, those will certainly go on into that kitty. Doesn't guarantee that we'll get reimbursed, maybe no agencies will get reimbursed, but one thing you can guarantee is you won't get reimbursed if you don't ask for it, and if you don't have proper tracking of it. Another thing we're doing in response to the coronavirus is we're canceling all large group meetings, nothing's going to be this face-to-face large group meetings, we're not scheduling any new meetings, we're not attending any functions we've been invited to. So no large staff meetings, no regional coordination meetings in person, no conference travel, no community outreach events like the San Marcos Street Fair that would be taking place soon, that's canceled, we won't be attending meetings like that. And lastly, we're conducting all of our Board meetings remotely, and I would suggest that it applies to our committee meetings too. We'll continue to have the meetings, we'll still get business done, but we'll do it in an alternative way. But the big message I want to get across is that we've got this, we've got our hands around this, the public has enough on their minds, the last thing they need to worry about is whether their water and wastewater services are going to be reliable, and I want to assure the Board and the public that they are, and we'll provide updates to the public and to the Board as necessary and as conditions change. So that's what I wanted to put out there, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that the Board may have.
Gentlemen, do you have questions or comments?
Director Evans, it's Director Sinella again.
Yes.
Yeah, first off, Glenn, I think, I appreciate the report, I think it sounds like you're taking all the appropriate steps, and they're similar to what I'm seeing in the private sector as well. The only, and I do know that our public relations team, Chris, and his folks have been real good about putting out information regarding the changes as to the, you know, the public access into the building, and then also the water reliability piece of it, and how COVID-19, you know, doesn't get, you know, transferred through the water. I would also like them, in addition to continuing that messaging, not, not, not to overdo it, but maybe put out at least one more time on each of those two subjects, I'd like to also see some public outreach around these, the late bills and disconnections that we talked about as well.
Okay.
Yeah, good point. Director Martin or Director Elatharp, do you have anything to say?
This is Director, oh, go ahead. Director Martin, the only I have to say is, great job, things are going very well. The best one I found, despite the facts out of what's going on, is the county. Supervisor Cox has got something on it every day, with the health people from the county, everyone from the county is there, no Johnny Come-Latelys, and, you know, the thing, the important thing is we're doing all the right things to keep the number low, but the important thing for us is that right now, there's only 60 people so far, and let's do, keep doing what we're doing to keep it down that way, but it's only 60 people so far, it's not the end of the world.
And Director Elatharp?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the General Manager for his comprehensive update and all the things he's doing, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, I would say the same, I think, good comments by everybody, but that was very impressive, and I know, as always, our district does an amazing job, so thank you to you, and then thanks to all of them in dealing with the challenges that they're facing. Next is the district legal counsel, so Jim, do you have something for us?
The, the only thing I would add is, Glenn indicated, things are changing rapidly. We implemented this meeting today under the executive order that was issued last week under the Brown Act. Yesterday, there was an executive order issued amending that prior executive order. The only change is that it would allow us to, allow the public to participate telephonically, you're no longer required to have a physical space available for them, so as we progress forward, obviously, the executive order only stays in place as long as the public health officials have imposed or recommended the social distancing requirement, but as long as that stays in place, we may want to look at, is there a way to allow the public to participate so we don't have to open a space, and that would obviously be up to all of you, if that's a route you want to go. I don't have anything further, President Evans?
Thank you. The San Diego County Water Authority is obviously following all the rules and regulations and precautionary measures relating to the COVID situation. We have our meeting via teleconference on the 26th, and I believe that's all there is to report. Encina Wastewater Authority?
Yeah, Encina has canceled, Director Martin, Encina has canceled all of their foreseeable capital improvement policy finance committees for the foreseeable future, we'll let you know when they come back on again.
Great, thank you, and how about the standing committees?
Standing committee, we had a F and I committee meeting on the 2nd, Monday, and we discussed the, quite a few things, but some of it was the upcoming schedule for looking at the budget for next year, and it's really compact and pretty thorough, and I appreciate that, so I'm going to assume that staff is going to be sending us their PowerPoint for us to be able to look at it as they tell us over the telephone, we can look at on our computers.
Yeah, and we will do that, if we have these meetings remotely, we will be trying to send more information to the Board members in advance of the meeting.
Yeah, wouldn't you just send us the PowerPoint?
That, probably, and any attachments to the PowerPoint.
Okay, thank you, and there was also a GPAC meeting, that was the last one they're going to have of those for quite some time, they've canceled all the rest of those, and that was interesting. James was there as well as I was there, and we went through some project, but the interesting thing was the, we went through a whole bunch of things, it was interesting getting a feel for the crowd, but it was, there were probably 200 people there, and this was on the eve, this is on the 11th, and on the 12th was when they said, no more meetings, so we were all worried for a while.
Wow, I bet.
But, you know, it's, with only 60 known cases in non-North County so far, I mean, we're pretty safe so far, I could change in a minute. So the GPAC committee meeting was good, and good attendance, and I think that's the only thing, oh, also there's an ad hoc committee that we had with our consultant, going over the hill, top of the other back, and where we stand, which is, he's still doing all this groundwork, and we'll be telling you the Board in the next couple of months with a full-blown, let you know exactly where we're at, we assume.
Okay, great, was, so you gave your report for attending, right? Is that, so Director Elatharp, do you have any reports on meetings or conferences, or standing committees?
Oh, we had a, yeah, we had an engineering committee meeting, Monday, March 9th, minutes aren't in this Board Packet, I assume they'll be in the next one, but the items for, we hadn't had a meeting in a long time, so we had a lot of kind of updates on different things, so we had developer and capital project updates, subage hauling station update, the solar project update, the high point condition assessment update, and we had a presentation on asset management by our new asset manager, Susan, and we also had a discussion on groundwater grants.
Wow, busy.
Yeah, we had a, we had a big agenda.
And Director Sinella?
I didn't report this time.
Okay, and I have nothing else to report, so we'll move on to other business, which is meetings, and they'll, sounds like they'll be teleconferencing. is meetings, and it sounds like they'll be teleconferencing, so is there any comments and future agenda items that any of you would like to propose? No? Okay, well, thank you, everyone, I want to say, I thought this went fairly well, it was crazy to me, but it worked out all right, I want to thank everyone for their hope on that, good job, and I would like to say special kudos to IT for the multitude of, I'm sure, variables they're dealing with to make all this happen, and as it, you know, changes day to day as well, so thank you very much, I hope you all stay healthy, and a complete and speedy recovery for Director Hernandez.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're adjourned.